Stand back a little bit, hopefully we won't get too much feedback. We apologize for the technical difficulties we're having. All these mics are not on, nor are those there. So I think that for this presentation, mostly we're going to be hearing from Treasurer Moss. I think this will work because that will block the audience live. And while that is happening, we'll see if we can try and figure out our other problems. So at this point, we're going to call roll first, and then do the pledge allegiance, and then we'll invite Treasurer Moss to come up and share with us the exciting program for the year. So roll call, please.
Supervisor Madron, if you want, since it's a copy of the document, I can just put it on the screen.
Let's do that.
Like that.
That works.
Okay. I'm going to do verbal. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
Supervisor Madron?
Present.
And Supervisor Wilson is out.
All right, great. With that, please join us in the pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. And so with that, Supervisor Bushnell, if you want to introduce.
Go ahead.
All right, well, it's a pleasure today to invite Treasurer Moss to come up and share with us this exciting program.
Thank you so much, Supervisors. Is it good? Okay, I won't be able to see my notes if I stand any further back. But it is an honor to be here. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I actually started my public service career on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors 20 years ago, in 2002, then served in the State Assembly as Majority Whip and Speaker pro temp, then served on the State Board of Equalization from 2014 to 2018, and now I serve as the California State Treasurer, so step by step by step by step. But it has given me a lot of background, information, kind of a big picture of how we generate revenues, how we spend revenues, and now as the State Treasurer, I am your banker. So all of the revenues come into my office. Last year was $3.2 trillion. I manage a short-term portfolio of about $200 billion, and I think Humboldt County is part of our local area investment fund, so your money is safe with LEAF, as I am supposed to say when I come out. And I also issue all the bonds for the state of California, all the general obligation revenue bonds, not only for the state, but the UC, CSUs, and community colleges. Then when Just Anru was the Treasurer many years ago, he said, oh, the Treasury sits on so much money, like we should be doing more. So today, I chair 13 boards, commissions that funds and finances affordable housing, charter schools, hospitals, children's hospitals and clinics, public transportation, advanced manufacturing, green energy, and more. I also oversee three savings programs with one new one coming, so I'm going to talk about one of them in more detail today, but ScholarShare 529, trying to keep our next generation out of student, high student loan debt, Cal Savers for any employee that is not offered a retirement savings account at their office, Cal ABLE, which is for people with disabilities diagnosed before 26 years old, and President Biden recently signed a bill that would extend that age of onset to 46 years old. This would include seven million more Americans, including 1 million veterans who will now be able to start saving for their retirement. And then our newest program is HOPE. These are HOPE accounts for kids who have lost a parent or parents to COVID, as well as for long-term foster youth. And so I'm very happy that, you know, I have these great savings programs. And today, we are going to have a town hall for Cal Kids. So this is the newest program. For any newborn, born after July 1st of 2022, they are going to get $100 in their child savings account. And that money is intended to grow until they're 18, ready to go to higher ed or a certified apprenticeship program. In addition, for every first through 12th grader on free and reduced lunch, they are eligible to get $500 in their own name. If they are homeless, they'll get another 500, and if they are a foster youth, they'll get another 500. So this is potentially $1,500 for any first through 12th grader. So we are out in the community trying to encourage parents or guardians to register their kids so that they can get this money in their account and start compounding interest as soon as possible. So that is my main reason to be up here, to meet with your county superintendent, your school board members tonight, and some of the parents, to let them know that this program is available and is free for these children. The federal government also gave us $1 billion to expand our loan loss guarantee and loan loss reserve programs for our participating lenders. This means that more lenders should be able to lend to businesses here, knowing that if the borrower does not pay back, the state is going to pay back. So this is the federal government's way of really trying to help our small and struggling businesses. Last time I was here, it was 2015, and I was in Garbeville, and I was here in Eureka, and it was thriving with so many small craft, independent, legacy farmers. I had just gotten elected to the Board of Supervisors, trying to understand, you know, how this industry worked. And back then, you couldn't find available property. People were busier than ever before. And now, because of the economy, because of PG&E issues, because of enforcement, lack of enforcement, we were just talking about that, and the difficulties in actually registering and getting a permit under Prop 64, has really strangleholed a lot of these businesses. I met with Supervisor Bushnell yesterday, and back in 2015, you had 3,500 farms, and today, it's 1,100 farms that are all just struggling to make ends meet. And having to pay all of these fees when they are fallowing their property is not right, and that is also impacting your growers. So I hope that, you know, together, we will see some relief. I worked on a bill two years ago that would decrease the distribution tax, waive the cultivation tax, and put the responsibility of sales tax collection on the retailers, since they are the ones that are the most knowledgeable about doing that. It's probably maybe a little too late. I think we need to do more, especially for your constituents here. And the state of California is not one size fits all, and it's very hard for many of your small farmers to compete with some of the larger ones around the state. And so I'm hoping that we will be able to get some equity for your communities so that they can continue to rebuild. I also talked a little bit about affordable housing. I chair the SIDLAC, the Debt Limit Allocation Committee, as well as TCAT, the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, and those are the bonds and tax credits that goes to build affordable housing for extremely low and very low individuals. Over the past four years, we have focused on new construction projects, but given that interest rates are rising, this year, we're going to shift our focus a little bit to rehab projects, because we have a lot of buildings that are getting older, and we don't want to lose those buildings to fair market value buyers, and so we need to invest and rehab these projects. And we also have been, are bringing back the industrial development bonds, and these are for small manufacturers. So anybody that is making a product up here, there is a pot of money that they can apply to, to help them grow their business. We also embarked on building housing on community college sites. We did our first project on the Santa Rosa Community College site, which was very successful, $167 million bond, creating 367 student housing units. So we hope to replicate that. If you have any community colleges that have land, please let me know. As well as a new bill authored by Assembly Member McCarty would allocate more money for student housing and faculty housing on UC and CSU sites. But given that we have a projected deficit this year, that money is probably going to be pushed back a little bit, but I know that you have housing needs at your CSU here, and so, you know, I hope we can keep in touch and, you know, let us know what those needs are, and we can also, you know, push on our side. So I guess my message here is, as the Treasurer now, I am giving away money. So lots of money still coming from the federal government in terms of grants, but when these grants are offered, it's usually competitive. And so if our communities are not ready, they have not gotten all their paperwork together, filled out the pre-application sometimes, then we are really losing out. And so I did over 200 webinars during COVID. I'm available to work with your chamber or your rotaries and all of you to get the message out. I have a Small Business Resource Guide that I could provide you to share with your constituents of available resources that are out there. But again, lots of money still coming from the federal government. We issue bond programs and loan programs, and so, you know, we have just a lot of resources at our fingertips, and I know I'm going to have a meeting with some of your key agency leaders later on so that they can let me know what some of your priority projects are, and then maybe I can find a match for those projects. So again, thank you all for your service. I know it's been difficult. Got to hang on. It's going to be, it's going to continue to be a little bumpy ride for another year or two, as I can see it. But in the meantime, I know you're all, you know, very entrepreneurial spirited, you're trying to pivot the best you can, and I want to be there to be your advocate and your partner as you are seeking to rebuild and regrow here in Humboldt County.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it. And as you are here to help us talk about the flow of money, the microphones are now working. So thank you, IT, for that. Magic on all levels. Thank you. So I'll go to the board and see if there are any questions or comments anybody would like to make. Supervisor Bone?
I love the idea of, when my son, the day after my son was born, I put a chunk of money away, and by the time he was 18, it was enough to pay for four years of college and a down payment on the house. So caught it at the right time. But with that being said, this money we're investing, is it just going to be through the flat interest? Keep it away from Pers, just because it doesn't seem like it will accumulate anything. I'm just, different financial advisors. But, you know, as we go forward, I, your accessibility has always been great. Connie Stewart says she wishes she could be here to karaoke with you, so I don't, there's a, but, but with that being said, we appreciate what you're doing. We appreciate your ascension through the chairs as we move up and everything else, and look forward to what else you strive to do. So appreciate that. I know you're really good to the RCRC, the Rural Counties Group. And with that being said, as, you know, as the water rises, all ships go. So I mean, small, we're a mid-range county. I think we're right in the dead center almost. I think we're 26 or 27. But there's so many counties that are a lot smaller, and they don't have, they don't have grant writers. They don't have. And that's, you know, working with RCRC and with a focused personnel to do these grants. And I know you're trying to get to there, but when one county is 25% of our state, and they have about 175 grant writers, and Alpine County with their 1,100 people has two sheriffs or two deputies. So I mean, it's just, anyway, you can help any of the rural counties, because with that, we all rise, but especially this rural county. So appreciate all that, and we'll try to get as much as we can.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, and I'll share with you resource, resources that you can get out to your community, because there is not one stop shop website that people can go to, and it's kind of word of mouth. And if we could, you know, get the word out, one person will get a loan, then another person will be like, oh, I got the same thing, you know, whether it's energy efficiency type of grants or loans. So thank you very much, and that's why I'm here. And when I sat on, you know, when I first got elected and it came to affordable housing, I saw the disparities that the big cities were getting most of the grants or tax credits. And so we created a system to try to make it more fair around the state. So now we have not only different construction types, but also allocations for geographic regions, so that the small rural communities would also have their fair share and opportunity to apply. And so I think you will see in all of the counties, the small counties also, are building new affordable housing and able to win that competition.
So anyway, thank you, and your follow-up is immense. I mean, I know we talked three weeks ago about a small fire district that was having a Persian problem, and then you followed up with it a week later when we met, and you said, how are they doing? They have secured financing, so they are in good graces with them now. So anyway, I appreciate your follow-up.
Thank you.
And your memory, really good.
And if anyone has any issues, the best email for me is askfiona@treasurer.ca.gov. And Catherine Asprey, that is, her job is to help constituents directly. So I want to put it out there for you as well as the public, and it's askfiona@treasurer.ca.gov.
Great, thank you. And Supervisor Bushnell, and then Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you for the first time last night, as being not the newest supervisor anymore, but a new supervisor. And I really want to thank you for recognizing the cultivation troubles that the state of California and Humboldt in general are having, also recognizing that the PG&E issues that are, you know, hitting the north or the south end of our county and really recognizing that. And I so appreciate the update on the investment that we're making in our young youth. That's, you know, where everything is at. And so, once again, it was so nice to meet you, and I look forward to working together in the future.
Thank you. Thanks, Supervisor.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you for bringing up some of the housing-related efforts and resources. I did, you know, I can't speak for College of the Redwoods, but I anticipate that they, you know, could be interested in collaborating on housing, and especially if there's already a model for expanding housing, in particular with community colleges. And then, of course, Cal Poly Humboldt is working on a lot of housing efforts, and there's still a lot of need, as we were discussing earlier. I wanted to note that the We Out Tribe has been doing something really innovative in collaboration with, they essentially formed a land trust to work on housing issues, and they've been expanding their housing stock to serve community members. And I think the model they're utilizing is really exciting, and I'd love to kind of talk more about what that looks like and how they can, you know, potentially partner with the state. And then, you know, I mentioned our Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, which I really look forward to seeing pay dividends on the Soma Peninsula as far as helping with development there. So I hope we can kind of apply the lessons learned from that to other potential opportunities for responsible development. I wanted to give just the opportunity to kind of mention the event this evening again. Could you give the details about that? I know that's open to the public. Could you share that?
Yeah, so from 6:00 to 7:30, we're going to talk about, sorry, we're going to talk, we're going to talk about Cal Kids to the Humboldt County Office of Education, Sequoia Conference Center, 901 Myrtle Avenue in Eureka. So we will be there with my Cal Kids team. We'll have a table, we'll have information, and we're really just trying to get as many parents and guardians to sign up their young people as possible. This is not a scam. This is actually a program supported by the legislature and the governor to give money to these young people in hopes that they, you know, will seek higher education or other opportunities, but have the necessary funding to do so when they're ready.
And if folks, I'm sorry, if folks can't come tonight, but they want to sign their children up, is there a website or a place they can go to do that?
Yeah, calkids.org is the website, calkids.org. Very, very easy to do, unlike the Prop 64 licenses. Registering for ScholarShare and all of my savings programs is very, very easy. And thank you. And then we also have a set aside for tribal property, building on affordable, affordable housing built on tribal properties, and we don't have enough applicants, so would love to get that contact.
Supervisor Wilson?
First, I want to apologize for being a little tardy today. Life and family have their own schedules sometimes. Thank you for being here. I'm going to just echo, I'm not going to repeat what other supervisors have said, but I do believe they're all important. I did want to emphasize that we are looking at offshore wind in this area with relationship to supporting that effort, and we understand it to be both an opportunity and highly impactful. And it's a place where we play a role, or could play a role, in both national and state energy security and transition moving forward, and we're hoping for a just transition in that regard. And in the past, when we've seen these major shifts and pushes at that level, you know, there's been large investments in the infrastructure that supports that. And right now, it feels a little like we're seeking those investments as opposed to those investments being proposed by the agencies, the larger agencies and society in general, to help us deal with the, with those changes moving forward. And so I just wanted to put that forward, that you, I'd like to have us reframe that in the future a little bit, and hope that the state and the federal government sees it a little differently than we're experiencing currently.
Yeah, okay. I can definitely be a bridge to that, and, you know, I think we have seen through the pandemic, as well as through brownouts or wildfires, that we have to have as many tools in our toolbox as possible in terms of maintaining and creating energy. So wind clearly is a great resource, the solar for many years, people are looking into hydrogen, obviously electricity, as long as there's electricity flowing, you know, the governor decided to keep Diablo Canyon open because that also provides an energy source. And so I think we just need to have a diverse group. You know, energy diversity is good for our state. We shouldn't be highly dependent on one or two.
And just to echo this program that you're talking about with investment at the state level with relationship to kids, right when they're produced, I guess.
Yeah.
It would be great. I, yeah, born, thank you. I've had a few, but you know, you know how it is.
Some people want to start.
Well, you know what I'm getting at. So I really do appreciate that very, very much, and I wish it had existed when my kids were both born and produced.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Very much appreciate you being here today, and as a grandfather of six foster youth, I would like to make a suggestion. So often with all our foster programs, once a family adopts that foster child, they lose a lot of their benefits. Things just go away, and the need doesn't go away. Just because they've been adopted into a family, I would submit that the need continues for the rest of their life.
Right.
And so it'd be really nice if that extra 500 for foster youth could continue even once they're adopted, because I can tell you that my two daughters struggle to try and get resources for their adopted foster children.
Right.
So please consider that in the mix of your policies around that, if that's at all possible. That's just one piece. And then the other one is, not everybody is bound for college. You know, a lot of children want to go into trades, and that's incredibly valuable. In fact, we're really hurting for children, for youth coming into trades, for all the housing we're going to build, for instance, right, and all these other things. So I'm hoping it's, I heard you mention certified apprenticeship, and a lot of our apprenticeship programs went away because we just didn't have the consistent job market to be able to run the apprenticeship programs. We are working and hopeful that they're going to be coming back with some of the very big projects, like wind and other things that we're talking about here locally. But I'm hoping that trade programs or trade schools and that kind of stuff also qualify for those youth that might want to go in that direction, so.
Okay. Yeah, Supervisor Madron, if you want to be on our advisory commission for our HOPE as we are creating, because we did have a young woman who has been in and out of foster care, and she says when she's out of foster care, then she loses her benefits, but then she's back in because her parents, her foster parents had abandoned her, and then she was again stuck out there with nothing.
Yeah.
So it is top of mind that kids do go in and out, and we shouldn't be taking it and giving it and taking it, making it more difficult for them. So we are very concerned about that. In terms of the ScholarShare 529 or these programs, certified apprenticeship programs is part of the IRS code, but I have found that a lot of the apprenticeship programs, like with the trades, they actually pay for the tuition. What they don't pay for is room and board, to attend, travel expenses, daycare, or childcare, and a lot of women are missing out on this. So I'm going to be lobbying Congress to expand the uses of these funds so that, you know, we can make these programs more accessible, because they're not everywhere in the state. Normally, people have to travel someplace and stay there for three or six months yet. How are they able to do it when they have all of these other expenses? So I am going to be working on that.
Absolutely, and I would be absolutely thrilled to help you with your advisory council.
Okay.
So if you want to send me an invite, happy to offer input and help with that. And at this point, we're going to go ahead and Supervisor Bone, one more comment.
And part of our legislative platform, we're also going to welcome, if it can work out, onshore wind also, because we've had projects here, and we'd be carbon neutral right now if one of them had gone through. So I mean, we're, offshore wind has so many, you know, it's a great program, it's going to be the future, I understand that, but as is stated up here, the need is yesterday.
Yeah.
The crisis is yesterday, and we're eight, nine years out on offshore. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to wait to find a way to do it, and I don't think it can all be solar, so thank you.
I will connect.
Thank you.
You with the appropriate contacts to make sure that we are reaching out to you.
Great, appreciate that. And at this point, we're going to go ahead to public comment, and we start with Zoom, and we have one number with a hand up, and that is 7454, and you have three minutes. I will provide a 30-second warning.
Kent Swatki, I really appreciate you coming up here and speaking. I have a court board, and your cards up there in one of the corners must have happened back in about 2019, or last time you were up here. From the public perspective, we have major concerns regarding the potential of many of the energy sources you have there. I think hydrogen is the one to concentrate on, or cold fusion, something that's a consistent source of power and is not coming up against Mother Nature. You may find that technology will change rather rapidly here. Regarding Cal Poly at Humboldt, there's a major concern with the structure that's going on there as far as they have existing buildings, and they are building buildings that are in excess of, I think, 40 feet. This is basically endangering our public health, safety, and welfare here, because the Acadia Fire Department only has the ability, I think, to go to 40 feet. So you may wish to work with Cal Poly there to contribute their share, to upgrade our local fire people so that they can protect the public health, safety, and welfare. I did have a question regarding money laundering. There's always been a major concern of some of us in the public, that both the state and the counties have been engaged in that themselves. They're able to accept large sums of money, well in excess of $10,000, that is not necessarily reported, and I don't know why that's able to happen, whereas my understanding is the financial institutions are required to report people depositing cash. So that might be a loophole you may wish to close. Strongly support such things as, well, hopefully, we're going to come up with maybe a quarter cent sales tax for roads, a self-help tax. If that goes through for our area here, I believe, and I don't want to misquote him, but I think Supervisor Madron was saying maybe we can get more incentives, more carrots to be self-help. That would help us move forward on that. And we have many pressing issues here, but the public only gets three minutes to comment on these things. So hopefully, you'll come back sometime, not too distant future. I just wanted to say ditto to everything that Supervisor Steve Madron said, since I followed that and some of the other comments made by other supervisors. Thank you for being here, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker, and thank you for not using the entire three minutes, because we have a long agenda today. We appreciate that. So at this point, did you want to comment on that? No?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, and then we have commenters here in the room, and I'm going to go ahead, and Holly, I'm going to turn on the mic there at the chair, and hopefully, we don't get feedback here. You've been having some issues this morning?
I voted for you every chance I had.
Welcome, Holly.
I will be very brief. When I turned on K-MUD as I was coming here to the meeting, there was our wonderful Superintendent of Schools with that recognizable voice, just like several of you, talking about this program tonight at HCOE. He also mentioned the way to access it remotely, but he said there's gonna be refreshments, refreshments and childcare. So as he said in that voice, they want everybody to know about this. And this is so exciting. I am just over the moon once again by the work that we all are, have worked so hard to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anybody else here in the audience today that wanted to comment?
No, I have a basket pocket.
She's an active one. Okay, well, it looks like that will close our public comment at this point. And very much appreciate you coming here and visiting with us and the program tonight. So folks out there listening, please show up for that and learn more about this great program.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And with that, we're actually, at this point, going to close this meeting, which was a special meeting that started at 8:30 theoretically, but we really didn't get started till 10 to 9. So we're running a bit behind. So we're gonna close this meeting and adjourn. There you go. Now, we're gonna open our regular meeting that started at 9 o'clock, and we're running a bit late. And let me just say, we do have a very large agenda today. So I'm very much gonna appreciate any brevity on the part of our board here in terms of comments, as well as the audience today. We're gonna start out with three minutes for comments throughout the day. But if it looks like the agenda is really, you know, eating up way too much time, I don't think we make good decisions at 7 o'clock at night. So I may, at some point during the meeting, reduce the time for public comment to two minutes. But I will let everybody know if that's going to occur, and it will be only on a particular item or set of items from that point forward. So at this point, I don't think we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance twice in one day. We just did that. But we do need to do the roll call again.
We need to end the first meeting on Zoom and reopen the new Zoom meeting.
Thank you.
So that'll take a minute or two.
Okay, so let's do that. You're absolutely right. Thank you so much for your help with that. And leave webinar. Okay, great.